Committee on Human Services Housing Youth and Elder Affairs be called to order. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Councilor Dean?
Here.
Councilor Libby?
Here.
Your proposal?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio/video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on the agenda is the minutes for the May 17th, 20... I'm sorry, I lied. First item is citizen's input. Do we have any citizen's input? I'll go with no. So with that said, second item is the minutes for May 17th, 2022. There is an amendment that needs to happen, so I'm going to ask for a motion. It's to amend item four, paragraph two, to strike out the word "every" and insert the word "many," and also make "department" plural to reflect departments. Motion to adopt as amended?
Second.
Okay. Motion to adopt as amended, first by Council Kadeem, second by Council Libby. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We have it. All right. Next on our agenda is a resolution for discussion on the American Disabilities Act Needs and Improvements, which was tabled on 5/17/2022. Need a motion to lift from the table? So moved. Motion made by Council Kadeem, second by Council Libby. All in favor?
Aye.
We have it. So we have on the phone here at the table Mr. Paselli from the Disability Commission here as well to discuss our ADA needs, and we're also going to call down Mr. Olivera to join us regarding this. And Council Farrar?
Well, I filed a resolution after I came.
Sure. Come on down. So just for the public's knowledge, I'll read off the resolution, then we can start our discussion. It was filed by Council Farrar, whereas upgrades are being made to Government Center to address barriers to accessibility, and whereas the City of Fall River received the Municipal ADA Improvement Grant to fund these capital improvements, and whereas more improvements are needed throughout the City of Fall River, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Human Services Housing Youth and Elder Affairs convene with the Chair of the Commission on Disability to discuss upgrades and improvements that are needed throughout the city, and be it further resolved that the City Council President consider appointing a City Council Liaison to the Commission on Disability. And again, this was tabled back on 5/17/22. At that time, we had discussed some of the improvements that were made, but now we're here to revisit that. So, Mr. Olivera, if you would like to...
Sure.
...give us some thoughts.
So, this is a great volume that has been put together. Now we have to act on this. We're currently working on the Vet Center. There's some low-lying work that we're trying to take care of. The painting on the stripes, that's already been taken care of. We have some ramp issues, we have some restroom issues, but for the most part, that's what we're tackling on at this point. There's been some upgrades here at Government Center, and we're going to continue following this volume as close as possible.
Council Farrar?
Yeah, I just think that the Commission on Disability was a commission that I had put together and got voted in by the Council several years ago, but I was concerned when Mr. Paselli came to a council meeting, and some of the issues that he spoke of was different lights in the city and crossing paths that sometimes, when it beeps, that it should be a specific beep, it shouldn't be like a bird tweeting, because then somebody would think it was a bird, and some of the ramps, especially in the downtown area, and a lot of people that have scooters, you know, I see them going like towards the Stop &amp; Shop from Tecumseh Mills, and there's a lot of trucks around there, and you don't even see the scooter, like, you know, maybe if we bought a lot of flags to stick a flag on it so people could see it, but it just seems, and Danny Robelad, who comes frequently, has also had concerns that he got hit once because he was driving in the street because there's not enough curb cuts along the way, and if we have a cement crew, maybe they could be doing some of that work in-house, and I don't know if opera money would be available, but all of the handicap fines, that money all goes to the Commission for Disability, that's how it was laid out, and I just don't feel that they have anybody from the Council to kind of hook and work with them on things, even when they're doing building projects, and that Commission of Disability is never pulled in to hear what they have to say. And that was my thoughts on it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Farrar. Mr. Olivera, I have a few questions in regards to what Council Farrar just said. As far as, for example, when curb cuts happen, how does the Commission of Disability get pulled into that conversation to make sure that those curb cuts are then accessible for those maybe in a wheelchair or those who need that assistance? Is there any process that's involved?
This is my third week. I hate to say that, but I will get that answer for you.
Okay.
I would imagine the city engineer would be highly involved with that, and obviously DCM would be part of that if we're doing any work in-house.
Okay.
Mr. Jim, just typically if it's a new repair to the sidewalk, you have to follow ADA compliance, so as long as it's not patchwork, you know, the ADA compliance would require all the stuff that's going to be needed by the Disability Commission, so...
Okay. Good. The other question, and actually, we have Commissioner Farrar here, if you want to come down as well, because I think a part of this conversation, as well as not only within buildings, is also what we discussed in audible pedestrian signals, which is also a concern. Mr. Paselli?
Yep, I'm here.
If you could, can you explain a little bit regarding the audible pedestrian signals and what we... what maybe the Commission would be looking to try to accomplish, some of the needs that you've identified, to give everyone here some idea?
Mr. Jim, and can I just add as well?
Yes.
I think the last time we met, Mr. Paselli was actually going out that week to, I think, South Main Street or, I believe it was South Main Street, just to listen to the signals to make sure that they were adequate, so if we can get an update on that.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Paselli?
Thank you. The corner of South Main and Dwelly does have audible pedestrian signals, these are voice activated. I did listen to them. I've been going to check them out. And I, I and our ADA work group at the Commission have been working very closely with a gentleman named Christopher Hathaway from the... Our PD signaling division, which we didn't know existed until some time ago, but we started working with him on it, and I found out that there are more streets in the city where there are. He had provided me with a list in October 25th, 2022, of a list of places where signals are being installed, and in some cases intersections. What these are, are these are audible pedestrian signals where you, a person who's blind or low vision can push a button, and when the light is red, you... it will give a variety of signals depending on which signal system you devise, what you... signal system you put in. There are problems with the voice activated system because of traffic. The more traffic you get, the more difficult it is to listen to the audible signal, voice activated signal, so, you know, you can install, like we did in Framingham and Natick, we installed, it's not a chirping one, but it's a kind of a beeping one, you push the button. It also vibrates, which is very good for someone who's both blind and deaf. So what we have here in Fall River are the voice activated ones, and again, you just have to be aware that the volume of traffic is going to impact the quality of the sound of the audible, of the voice activated system. So, I don't remember the exact number, but there are quite a few numbers, I guess, that have already been installed. The cost averages anywhere from $1,200 for one button. If it's an intersection, it goes up to $2,400, so it's double to install these. So, I don't know if I'm hitting, you know, if I'm answering your questions, but that's where we are. We've been told that we could qualify for opera money because one of the categories is safety, I guess, so the last time I left this discussion some time ago with the city administrator, it was, we were looking into possibly using some opera dollars for that as well to install more of them. I think whenever you install new lights, I think it's a good idea to have these audible pedestrian signals as well, so I think that's where we are. I think there's been a period of transition, and I'm eager to, and our work group is eager to contract, contact and work with Mr. Olivera, you know, to continue on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Paselli. Mrs. Farrar, do you want to add anything to that conversation?
Yes. You were questioning the handicap ramps.
Mm-hmm.
I know throughout the city, if it is a contractor, under the state laws, Sean Kadeem was saying, they do have to put handicap ramps, and that's one thing we always check, make sure they're ADA compliant. They just finished doing Robeson, Bottoms Road, and they're going to be doing New Boston Road, they're going to be doing all-new sidewalks with all handicap accessible. So if it's them doing it, we automatically handicap, have handicap ramps. I know that DCM repairs a lot of sidewalks. That's something that we need to look into to see if they're going to get to a section where there is an intersection, can we ourselves put in handicap ramps? We're going to be there anyway, so I don't know if that's a possibility, you know, because you have to do the cost, you have to buy the pads that go on it with the bumps, so that's something that we should also look into because that's an activity that's been going on quite a bit since last year, putting in all-new sidewalks. Other than that, this year, I know that we installed one on Highland Avenue at French, and it's, you have to push the button, you're going to hear the beep. The light turns red, so it tells cars to stop so that pedestrians can cross. We put one there recently. I don't know of any other location. We do have the one on Dwelly, but the state put those up when they did Vivera School. So the one on Highland Avenue is working really well. I just worked with Jane before she left, and we're hoping to get a grant to get, the only thing is, we can only get two because they're really expensive. So we're going to look for a location in the city where we can put that as well, which is pushing the button, you'll hear the beep, and then the light will turn red and allow people to cross.
Okay. My colleagues have anything to add? No. My only request would be, would it be possible to get a general good list together of what intersections would be priorities, maybe working with the Commission to get an idea of what that may be? This way we can start tackling them piece by piece and see the ones that we may need to do sooner rather than later, and then go from there. Mr. Paselli, do you have anything else to add?
No. I do have a list that Mr. Hathaway provided me on October 2022, which I'd be happy to provide, about what streets have and what streets are still being worked on in terms of audible pedestrian signals.
Excellent.
I'm also concerned that there be some kind of consistency in the signals that are being installed. I mean, I heard, I thought I heard Commissioner Farrar say that there were some beeping ones being installed, so I'm a little concerned about consistency, but that's, I think that's something we can work on with our work group.
Fair enough. So I think in the light of this, there's still some more answers we're going to need, so I would put out there that we table this for another meeting, and then from there we can get an update from Mr. Olivera, once you have a better sense of where we're at with things, and then we can revisit the pedestrian signals in a little while.
Okay.
So moved?
Second.
So, motion to table made, Council Kadeem, second by Council Libby. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, folks. All right. Item number four on our agenda is a resolution to discuss on accessing to housing and homelessness with local community organizations. This was adopted on 9/27/2022. I'm going to have Mr. Deon come on down and join us, and friends as well. I'll read the resolutions for the publics, so they understand what's going on. It's filed by myself. Whereas within our community, there is an increased concern of the access to housing in the city, and whereas if left unaddressed can lead to increased homelessness and other life-changing circumstances, and whereas community organizations provide many supports and services to the community, and whereas these organizations would like to educate the public on these important topics, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Human Services Housing and Youth and Elder Affairs meet with local community organizations to provide information and guidance to the greater community on this important issue. Before we begin, I will say that back in October, late October of 2022, there was a meeting put together by Representative Fiola and brought all these different organizations together, both community, local government. I believe both of you were there as well for that meeting, and Rep. Fiola and her team is putting together a resource guide of all the different organizations that we can then get out to the city residents for those who may need it, so that is forthcoming. Rep. Fiola said it should be done shortly, so as soon as I have that, I will get that out to everybody. Just get their names for the record? Yes. Your names and titles, and for the record, please.
Mike Deon, Director of Community Development for the city.
Kevin Spadella, Executive Director, Fall River Housing Authority.
Okay. So I think we'll start, Mr. Deon, if you want to give us a general overview of how things are going, I know we've talked recently about homelessness and access to housing, so maybe you can shed some light on some of those topics.
Well, under the housing, the Community Development Agency, as you're well aware of, provides low-interest loans to outside developers and also homeowners to rehab their house. We've had some great projects. We've brought about 32 new units over the last year. We've had some big projects. We did the redevelopment of 64 Durfee Street, which brought in 11 units of affordable housing, total 45 units of market rate. We've also brought in curtain lofts for the knitting mills, and we're currently working on another 28-unit building on South Main Street, and several three-family, four-families throughout the city. So what we do is we provide low-interest loans, and in turn, we get an affordable housing restriction on the property. And what that affordable housing restriction does is it requires the landlord to rent to a certain income level, and that landlord can only charge so much rent. Currently, in preparation for this meeting, CDA has about, don't quote me on this, about 550 units in their portfolio right now with landlords' CHODOs, which are community development housing organizations throughout the city. That also includes permanent supportive housing. What we've done over the last several administrations, and we've kept it going under the Coogan administration, is to make sure that we stay above that 10% threshold for 40B, and what we've been doing is adding affordable units to market rate developments also. We don't, we work very closely with the investors. We're not housing developers, but we provide services and funding to get them to develop these properties. So if you look at an example, 64 Durfee Street, you know, 45 units, 11 of them were affordable, so you're talking about a 22% affordability to that project alone. So we try to keep above that 10%, which we've been successful at, and will continue to do that. We do already have, just so you know, some resource guides here. I didn't bring a whole bunch of them for the committee, but the first resource guide that she has was put together by the Coogan administration in his office, which gives you all of the apartment complexes in the city, contact information, do they take subsidized, non-subsidized, waiting lists, stuff like that. The other is a resource guide for all kinds of different housing and homelessness needs, from soup kitchens all the way to the emergency shelters, to CFC, you know, utility allowances and all of that. On the homelessness issue side, we've done a concerted amount of work. In my 26, 27 years here, this is probably the most we've ever done for homelessness in the city. We right now have a state-of-the-art shelter that was built four or five years ago, which is the first step in, takes 50 beds for homeless individuals, males and females. Currently, that shelter is at capacity right now. In the past, we've ran a overflow shelter that moved every two weeks over different churches throughout the city. It was very, very difficult for transportation needs, for feeding, food needs, so what we did was with American Rescue Plan money, we invested in an additional shelter in the city, which is at Spindle City Church, former Solomon's Park, which is on Bay Street. That shelter has 30 beds available to it, 20 male and 10 female. Currently, that shelter is not at capacity right now. We've done extensive work with street outreach. We've hired two different street outreach coordinators, one that works directly in Stepping Stone and one that works directly for the city. We've also purchased a van to go out and bring the homeless into services instead of bringing the services to the homeless people. We've also worked very closely with the Housing Authority. What we're seeing is a backlog with homelessness. People come into the shelter, the next part would be to try to get them housing. One of the main objects is to get them into what we call permanent supportive housing, which is housing with supports. We've worked with the Housing Authority, and we just brought on a new program called Moving On, and you probably can discuss it better than I can, but it's an additional 20 vouchers that will take some of that and make some vacancies in our permanent supportive housing to move people out of the shelter into supportive housing. HUD did away a long time ago with what we call transitional housing. They went with a housing-first model, which means get them housed, they're okay, great, move on, but we've seen that doesn't work. It doesn't work because they need stability, and you just can't do that by just giving a home. We've done a lot of work in the encampments through this administration. We've worked, and we've had some great, great strides. We've closed down the encampment behind, on Plymouth Avenue, behind near Tokyo Steakhouse. We're working currently right now on getting people off the rail trail, but we're doing it the right way. We're not going out and just pulling down tents and wrecking people's homes, and what we're doing is asking them to get into services, trying to find beds for them in detox. If somebody wants to leave the community and wants to go back home, we've bought some bus passes, we've bought some train passes. We're working every day, and like I said, we're being, you know, we are successful. We just recently, you know, just as an example, husband and wife in an encampment, he was a mechanic, got involved into drugs, we got him into detox, he detoxed, he's back working as a mechanic, making good money, and we've been able to set him up with an apartment very close to his work so he can walk to work, doesn't need transportation. So, you know, we take each individual case individually. Each one's different. So we've done a lot of work. We're putting together a homeless drop-in center that's going to open on April 1. It's going to be down at Solomon's Porch, Spindle City. Homeless are going to be able to go down there, they're going to be able to wash their clothes, take showers, they're going to be able to access job opportunities. We're looking to put together a work group for the summer of about 10 to 15 homeless, get them in the van and get them out there working and paying them a stipend on a daily basis. So there's different things that we're doing, but I've never seen such a concerted effort in these last couple of years that I've seen previously.
Do you have a sense of how many homeless we currently have in the city?
We're going to be doing our point-in-time count. HUD requires us to do a point-in-time count once a year. It's usually the last week in January, so we're going to be doing it in the next couple of weeks. The last point-in-time count that we had, had 108 individuals living on the streets. Now, that number is, I believe, is a little skewed, because when we did that, we also had like an open house at Stepping Stone where we gave all kinds of services out, and we know that some people that did come to that opportunity presented themselves as homeless where they're really not homeless. So we're going to get a better count this year. We're not doing the outreach, we're going to move that outreach to August where we do our continuum of care, does a daily, once a year at BCC, where we provide all kinds of services to the homeless community. So we're doing it a little different this year.
Okay. Do you want to add anything to that? Want to turn the microphone over?
Good evening. Yes, we've had some communications with Mr. Deon and the mayor on the current homeless situation. Unfortunately, at the Housing Authority, we have about 2,400 units, state and federal, 15% the state portfolio, 85% federal. Our federal occupancy rate is just under 99%, and the state is just over 99%. The Housing Authority has never had that, but with the homeless, with the real estate market, it's caused these numbers to rise. We've been in communications, as I said, with Mr. Deon and the mayor about the possibility of using a couple of our high-rise buildings, the community halls, as an overflow homeless shelter. Unfortunately, with that, there are some liability issues, so when we acquired with our insurance carrier, we have to have some sort of agreement with the homeless shelter organizations because our carriers don't cover us as a homeless shelter. So we're continuing to try to work that out if there is a need, so we can do our part in the community on that end, but as far as the vacancies, there's just not that many when they do, when we do get them. We have a diligent facilities department that tries to flip them to get to the next person on the list. Unfortunately, it's never as fast as the person that's waiting enough, so, but we're all working very hard to try to curtail some of these issues as best we can through these roundtable meetings and our communication with Mike, so that's where we're at right now.
Council Libby?
So I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that Mr. Deon said. They do work on a case-by-case basis. I reached out to Mike and also to Nikki Fontaine about all individual people, individual situations, nights, weekends, holidays, they've always responded and always done everything they could to take care of people on an individual basis depending on what they had going on. I know one of the issues is if it is a female or if there is a child involved, they have to call that home number, and that home number is not available on weekends. They work Monday through Friday. Is that...
The city does not provide homelessness shelter services for families, that's through the state. To access any kind of homelessness services in the city, we developed what you call a coordinated entry system. It's called a CALL, it's run by Catholic Social Services, so there's a number that you need to call. Now, my understanding is that there are people on weekends, I'll check into that, but it's supposed to be 24/7.
Okay.
If you're homeless and you need emergency shelter, you can bypass that number and go directly to...
directly to First Step In.
With a child?
No. Our shelters do not take families. The First Step In doesn't take families and the overflow doesn't. What'll happen usually is if there's a family and it's on a weekend, or if it's during the day and they can't get into the services that they need, we'll put them up in a hotel or a motel for a certain number of days.
Okay.
We also do that a lot with people who test positive for COVID and different. We test all of our clients for COVID when they go into the shelter. But yeah, there's, usually family homelessness is handled by DHCD. There's a hotline number that they need to call. But again, if they present themselves at 2:00 in the afternoon or 1:00 in the afternoon, it's very difficult to get that started until the next day. So we'll put them up. I don't want anybody homeless. We'll make arrangements to figure out anything for anybody. We do sometimes have problems. We had just recently, last week, where a hospital out of this area sent somebody down to one of our shelters. We sent them back. You know, we have a lot to take care of our own. And to do that without any planning and without any calling to our shelters, we're not going to accept that. So I will definitely check on that. I'll get back to you. But I believe that number is 24/7, supposed to be.
For the Catholic Social Services.
Yes, yes.
That was, it was a Friday night, and I know Nikki ended up taking care of it as she always does, but there was a child involved. So that was the one pickup. And I know the other thing, when our people that we have out on the street going out for the homeless, one thing you said that's important is that they don't take down the encampments. I don't know if you saw the article, but just recently, I think it might have been One Socket, they had gone in and just pulled everything out of homeless camp. But that's their homes, everything that they have. And I know that Fall River is very mindful not to do that and to work with them.
The Coogan administration's been having like bi-weekly meetings. We have a group of us that work very closely. Nikki, Stephanie Perry from the hospitals, the Thrive people, Beth Fons. There's a group of us that meet. And, you know, since we started looking at these encampments, you know, it's been known at the table that we are not to disrupt. Until we find other locations where they can go for services, we will not, you know, tear the property down. We even had the Corporation Council come and tell us, you know, he looked at court cases and said that it would be not right for us to do that, that we could get, there would be liability to it. So we're very cognate of individual feelings when it comes to homelessness and working with them.
I agree. And the only other thing I have is on this, do you know how often this gets updated?
That was put together sometime in August, September. So, you know, we kind of, I guess we're going to look at it usually once a year or twice a year to see what additions or subtractions we can put into it.
Could I suggest an additional column for if they accept pets? Because we always get asked that. With that, I go, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dionne, thank you for, number one, everything that you do, especially with all the funding that comes from, you know, federal government and putting it into the right places to make this happen. And just the oversight with the investment on the projects. You had mentioned earlier, medium income in the rent. Do you know what the median income is for affordable housing?
It...
I know it fluctuates. I'm just curious to see where it stands in this housing line.
I'll leave you with this too. An example is when we do a rental unit, if that rental unit does not have anybody in it, they're required to be 60% or below the area median income. So if you're doing a family of four, that would be $58,020. If you're doing a first-time home buy alone, that would be 80% of the area median income, which for a four-person would be $77,350. If somebody already resides in the unit prior to rehab, it's 50% of the area median income, which is $48,350 for a four-person. So you guys can have, I got a couple of those if you want.
What's the rent? Is there a...
The rents change per the unit size. If you're a three-bedroom, without utilities would be $1,240. With utilities would be $1,525.
And that's why I asked for it, because it...
You'll see that on the same page that you have on the lower section.
Right. When folks hear affordable housing, I think they have a different understanding of what it is. And when you start looking at what the rent is allowable under affordable housing, it's not really that affordable. You know, $1,200, I mean, that's just, it's high for somebody that's making good money, right? If you get a, you know, even if you get into somebody with a four-family or whatever the case may be, it's just, it's really, really high right now as we're starting to see it. You know, you go back to just 2008, 2010, when the, right before the market crashed, you know, you've seen the rents at $1,000 for a three-bedroom. Now they're getting up to almost $2,000, $3,000. And quite frankly, that's a mortgage, right? So I don't know, from an affordability standpoint, we've had this conversation, how we can kind of address that and what we can do as a city and as a city council, legislative body, to try to provide additional services and funding to kind of help offset that for folks that need it.
Yeah. What I'm seeing a lot right now is people that are on fixed incomes, who are on SSI, SSDI, they're making $1,000, $1,200 a month, even $1,500 a month. They've been living in a unit that was $750 for the longest time. And now somebody bought the property and that rent is now going to $1,200 to $1,500 a month, and they're getting priced out. I mean, I've seen units on Flint Street for $1,700 for a two-bedroom.
Right.
So my position is, is there's a real need for subsidies for those individuals. We can pay, we have a program with Catholic Social Services where we pay first month's, last month's security. And we can also provide some short-term, three to six months. But it's just not enough. I mean, after the three to six months, it's not sustainable. So those individuals need access to some kind of subsidy. There's no other way of affording it, because you can't find an apartment in the city of Fall River for $800 a month.
And with, I mean, we haven't even gotten the train down, right? So assuming that the train comes down, you've got folks that are potentially looking to relocate in the city. I mean, that's also going to drive the market a little bit more, and you're going to see rental units go even higher. How do we stabilize that?
It's already starting because I've heard on several occasions, people who are really interested in properties that are selling around Main Street area, because it's close near the train. So what I'm seeing is a lot of investors are coming from Boston and New York City, I've seen it. And the three-family house in Fall River that's $500,000 is, you know, a million dollars in Cambridge. So they're getting a more, bigger bang for their buck down here. I don't know how to solve, I don't know how to solve the issue. And I don't think it's going to get any better. I mean, I really don't think so. I think the market is going to go down probably a little bit. But I don't see the rents changing because people are buying these three-family houses at, you know, 500, 550. They need that $1,500 per unit to pay the mortgage, the taxes, and the water and all the expenses that go along with it. So I don't know really what the future's going to bring in. How do you fix it, other than, you know, bringing more subsidies in? It's the only way, you know. I think market rate is going to, market rate has helped, I think, to a certain extent, where I think some people lived in affordable housing that were, are able to move into maybe a market rate unit that opens up a affordable unit. The other problem we have is the vacancies. We really don't have any vacancies. It is really difficult to find an apartment for somebody in the city. I used to be able to call one or two people, say, hey, I got a client that might want to look at renting an apartment. And, you know, they had four or five of them open. I'm calling eight to 10 people, and I still can't find a unit, you know, available. So it's, I don't know the answer to the question.
No, and I get that. I was just trying to see, hopefully, that maybe there was something there that we could kind of latch on to and really kind of build on. This is a nationwide issue. And, you know, for us, at least, this is definitely a statewide issue that needs to be addressed. Just because when you look at the numbers, $1,200 for a three-bedroom, there's no way a family of four with an income of $58,000 can afford it, right? So, you know, you just look at the cost of living, you know, just eggs alone, I mean, are going up, heat, electric. It's just, I don't know how folks can sustain it. That truly, you know, that was a mortgage if you purchased a house a couple of years ago, right? So if you're in the market now, obviously, that's not, that's not your mortgage now. But if you purchased, you know, $1,200, that's definitely a mortgage, right? So I'm just trying to figure out, and I know this was more about educating with the services that are offered by the different organizations and things of that nature. So I appreciate it. But I did want to get that out there. I know, talking to Mayor Coogan, you know, that was one of the topics that he really wanted to address with Governor Healy coming in, to really kind of focus in on how do we, how do we really address this, not only for the city of Fall River, but for the state. But when we're, I think for us here, we can't just look at Fall River. I think we need to kind of look at it regionally, whether it's New Bevitt, Taunton, and Fall River, and try to figure out how we can best impact the South Coast. And the best way to do it is obviously to team up and try to think outside the box. I just don't know what the answer is.
Yeah. I think education also plays a role in it. And I'm going to get this wrong, but I believe we're the only courthouse, housing court in the state of Massachusetts that doesn't have a, like, legal rights component to it. So when we deal with a lot, when I deal with a lot of people, they don't know what their rights are when it comes to housing and eviction process and what do I do. And, you know, and I've had people leave their apartment, just leave, say, see you later, I'm gone. And the best thing to do is stay in that apartment until you can work...
Unless you own it.
Unless you own it, yeah. Stay in that apartment until you can, until you can figure out, you know, the process and what's best for you. So I think that's one of the issues where you could start. I think another issue is, again, having them maybe provide more money to the housing authorities to get more vouchers and more assistance. I think our homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, I know the mayor's talked to Arkin Claus a lot concerning, you know, getting us more money down here for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. The sad part of it is, is the government usually gives you money and then once the money's gone, you don't get anymore. So we've made a tremendous amount of strides over the last, and it's not because of me, it's the whole community. It's you guys, it's the city council, it's the mayor's office, it's our nonprofit providers, excellent people. But on September 30th, all our money goes away. So our street outreach teams, unless we find other funding for this, our street outreach teams will no longer exist. There's going to, you know, if you don't have the money, we get a very small amount of money on a yearly basis to run our shelter. $125,903, to be exact. That's what we get. And I don't know how you run a shelter and an overflow shelter with just that amount of money. You can't. So those are a couple of things. I don't mean to keep talking, but those are a couple of things that could be done with the state delegation and our federal delegation to say, hey, we need more resources.
No, I just want to echo, I think you do a great job, especially using, you know, home funds to try to kind of turn around some of these vacant properties and get them in chodos and, you know, try to get them to an affordable state. But I just think, you know, the bigger conversation needs to take place at the state level. And I think we should be part of that and really pushing the new administration at the state level to kind of really focus in on how do we address this, especially with the income levels that we have. And, you know, I know you said the homeless count back in January, you thought was a little high. I would tell you that. I think it's a little low. Just, you know, having gone over to Britland Park and watched my daughter and son play soccer over there, you'll see folks camped out in their cars. And it multiplies. It started at one, goes to two, three. I think by this time the season ended, there was at least four individuals that were in their cars. That's not even going into the trail, right? So, you know, you start to see those folks. And, you know, we can only do so much. They obviously want to have to have, they want to have to help themselves. And there's a lot that goes into it, to the services that you talked about, whether it's substance abuse or mental health. I think that's another aspect that we really need to kind of focus in on. And I know you folks get that. But for the folks at home to truly understand, it's not just, you know, getting rid of these panhandlers and stuff. There's a lot more that goes into it. And if they don't want to help themselves, it's difficult for us to be able to do that. So I know you probably run into a lot of folks that you're trying to get relocated and they just refuse to leave. That's what they know, that's what they like and...
Yeah. We have a lot of people who, like right now, like I said, the overflow shelter does have vacancies. And anybody has the opportunity to go into those vacancies. And the outreach teams have been pushing them, you know, to get out of the encampments, to get into the shelters. Because once you're in the system, if you're not in the system, you're never going to get a lot of help. You're going to get into the system and start moving along. And that system might, it's sad, it might take a couple of years, but you get into the overflow, what usually happens at the end of the overflow season, all of those people from the overflow go directly to the First Step In and have a bed there. So, you know, it moves along, you know, into maybe an SRO or to a supportive housing situation. So, you know, there are some hardcore homeless that do not like to live in shelters, do not like rules, do not like regulations. But you know something, you could work with them 10 times, on that 11th time, you might be successful. So the outreach people don't give up on them. They just keep working.
And I guess a final statement is, is that we've really got to make sure we're, you know, I guess banging on the state door, not the federal door, because, you know, the federal money's coming in, it's going to be limited. I mean, you just need to, all you need to do is turn to the West Coast. And you see the disaster that's taking place in, you know, California and, you know, Oregon and things like that. I mean, the homeless people are literally on the sidewalks. It is unbelievable. The services are not being provided. You know, police department's not assisting with anything. The cities are not assisting with anything. So we need to make sure that whatever is, whatever we're doing needs to be done at the state level. And we can't just wait for the federal government to kind of bail us out. But we still need to knock on the federal door as well to make sure that the money's, and we keep advocating for it. But we've got to figure something out at the local levels, definitely to make sure that we're not going to turn into the West Coast.
I just want you to know that, and it's not because of me, but you have a great, many great organizations in the city. There's a lot of meetings that are happening. We're tackling this thing head-on. Are we going to be successful? Hopefully, we are. But we've made a lot, a lot of strides, and it's all been positive. And I know that it's one of the main priorities of the administration.
Yeah. And I know the police department's also involved, helping you guys with, I think it's the FAST team that they have.
Yeah, we developed, we applied for the FR Carer Grant, which is a four-year grant that puts clinicians and recovery assistants in police cause. So we have three or four recovery coaches right now. We just brought on a clinician. We have a dedicated Fall River police officer. So what we're trying to do now is trying to get out there and work with people who have either overdosed. I heard a number the other day, and don't quote me on this, but I heard something about our overdoses have gone under since we've had this program, about in the hundreds. So hopefully, I think it is working. It's a good program, and we're going to keep running it, you know, and hopefully we can sustain it after the four years.
Thank you, without our yields.
Thank you, Counsel Kadim. Counsel of Liberty?
I just wanted to say, for any tenants that are given their notice, and I know you know this, but there are tenants' rights handbooks on the state website.
Yes.
And they don't have to just up and leave. There are resources available.
We always point them to South Coast County's legal.
Yep.
They have legal representation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Item number five is a resolution. Administration provide information regarding homelessness in the city of Fall River. This was filed, referred on 11/8/22.
Chairman, do you want to do a grant leave-to-withdrawable on item number four?
Um, yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
That should be fine.
I'll make a motion for a grant leave-to-withdrawable on item number four.
Second.
Second. Motion, grant leave-to-withdrawable, made by Counsel Kadim, second by Counsel of Liberty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Yes, have it. Item number five is a resolution. It reads as the following. Whereas the winter months are approaching and whereas the city council should be concerned about homelessness in the city, therefore be it resolved that the administration provide an update on the estimated number of homeless individuals in the city, and be a further resolved that the administration provide the amount of funding received by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to address this matter and what steps are being taken to address this issue. I think in many ways, I think we already took care of that.
Just covered that.
So I'll entertain a motion, grant leave-to-withdrawable.
So moved.
Second.
Is that allowed? Okay. Counsel of Palatier, if you'd like to come down and share some thoughts?
So withdraw, because there's no discussion on-
Sure. We'll withdraw the Grant Leave to Withdraw motion. Invite Council of Pelletier to the table.
Throwing curveballs, Leo.
Good evening, sir.
My name's Leo Pelletier, if anybody cares. But, you know, I got a call this week and you're coming off ninety, one ninety-five, going to Great Navin. And the woman's complaining about the junk that's there. I see some brown barrels down there. The Tenth City, I know you guys must have seen it. And then she's complaining up the road, there's all kinds of papers and everything else. And it all ties into something that I brought up some time ago about barrels and getting barrels out, but they, they made it so difficult, you know, I want a barrel, but they want to say, I want a specific barrel this, that. So you never got it. You never come back with any answers. But that particular property, I don't know, I understand it's state property. You know, the, the Capitol of Providence had them all in front of their place. They got rid of them. I mean, there should be something we can do to get rid of these guys. I mean, it's nice if we can find a place for them and they don't want to go. Well, you know, it's, you're coming in from another part of the state or New York and they take that exit and they see that. It really doesn't look good. So I don't know, you know, if the mayor has the power to do anything with this. You know, Mr. Deion, nice presentation, but we're still stuck with them people there. And what do we do with them? What does the city do? Is there anything that can be done? And that's all I got to say. You guys think about it. And I'm bringing out the complaint because I got the complaint. If I get the complaint, somebody else got the complaint as well. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Any further discussion on item-
Do you maybe want to-
Council of Liberty?
Do you maybe want to table this one? Because he's asking for a number and I know they do their count at the end of January.
Sure. I'll entertain the motion. Well, we're, we're on five.
Five.
Yep.
Motion to table.
Yep. Motion to table made by Council of Liberty?
So, second.
Second by Council Kadeem. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? The ayes have it. All right. Next is item six. I'm actually gonna ask for a motion to take six and seven together.
So may.
Second.
Okay. Motion to take six and seven together, made by Council of Liberty, second by Council of Kadeem. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. I'll read both resolutions. Item number six is a resolution to discuss budgetary recommendations to improve city parks within the administration, referred on eleven eight two thousand twenty-two, written by Council Washington. Whereas city parks provide an increased quality of life and enjoyment of the city for residents and visitors, and whereas many city parks are currently in disrepair and being underutilized by local sports teams and residents, and whereas new additions to city parks such as skate parks and renovations of existing playgrounds and baseball fields will improve the city overall, therefore be resolved that the city administrator convene the city council committee on finance to discuss the planned budgetary recommendations to improve the parks and recreation division. And this was referred to this committee on November eighth. And then item number seven is a resolution. Administration prepare a presentation to address the needs of city parks and leagues. And it says, whereas city parks are in need of repair and whereas baseball leagues are all independent and do fundraising on their own, therefore be resolved that the administration prepare a presentation to address the needs of city parks and the needs of leagues. And be a further resolved that the administration and park board be invited to a future meeting of the committee on finance to present a plan to improve our city parks and baseball fields, as well as bring forward in conjunction with the baseball leagues, any immediate capital needs for our city parks. And be a further resolved that bids be obtained and a cost provided to the city council for a strategic master plan for all parks and that it be researched whether open space and recreational grant funding is available for these improvements, referred to us on October twenty-fifth. We have Mr. Pirino here. If you want to come down, if you have a presentation to provide to us. What is it? Commissioner Smith will join us. She's at a currently another meeting. And I just wanted to share for the record, the city administrator is sick today. That is why Mr. Aiken is not here with us.
Oh, just excuse, sick.
Good evening.
Mr. Pirino, tell us.
Trying to get this up and running as quickly as possible here for you. I did provide a paper copy to Councilor here at the table. All right. To not waste any time, I think I can just jump in, if that's all right.
Yes, sir.
So in two thousand and fifteen, the city had Blount Bennett Architects do a capital improvement plan through our park cemeteries and other open spaces. They identified a number of priority items and ranked them one through five for the city. So those priority rankings are listed here on the, that second slide. As of this year, we've completed roughly fifty percent of the nearly two, about two hundred and four priority items. So I'll go through and provide an update on the parks, as well as different items that we have slated for the year future.
Mr. Pirino, do you want to, do you want to get the PowerPoint up and running before we continue? Just so the public can also follow along here.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So Kennedy Park, the completed projects include the repair of a retaining wall on Bradford Avenue funded through CPC. It paid for design services and the structural repairs to the maintenance building as well, to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars. The basketball courts were also rehabilitated through a park grant from the Commonwealth. Ongoing projects include a new tennis and pickleball court at the lower part of Kennedy Park. The budget is five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and comes from a combination of different funding sources, including the operating budget, CDA, and a park grant. There is a sixty thousand dollar award from ARPA to do a feasibility and design study for new splash pads, which would include benches, picnic tables, and shade structures. The renovation potentially of the existing pool building, based off of what the architects are able to determine from their study. They will look at the use of the existing fountain and basin floor for a potential outdoor ice rink. They are evaluating upgrades and repairs to the existing gazebo and overlook building, as well as the park office, and looking at the cost of new walkways, a multipurpose sport field, and electrical work at the gazebo to support different community events. And this is also funded through ARPA. We are in the design process for the Kennedy Park Overlook, which is off of Club Street, heading towards the condos there. We were funded through CPC to the tune of one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. We're under contract with a designer right now. Just before the holiday, they were doing some surveying work. And once we have that returned to us, we'll start the design process. The image here is what a potential concourse overlook of the Taunton River might look like sometime in the future. Through CDA, Paul Poulis Memorial Park was rehabilitated, as well as renamed. That funding was two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. The Kathy Assad Tot Lot was completed in two thousand and twenty-two. Again, a mixture of funding from the park grant from the state and CDA. CDA is a big partner for a lot of these park projects that require a local match. Damaris Playground, again, completely rehabilitated through CDA funding, about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Abbott Court, we are scheduled to do a new skate park there, funded through ARPA by July of this year. And CDA is looking at putting in a new playground in two thousand and twenty-four. Columbus Park, in twenty-one, we did some park bench and signage replacements through CDA. And again, in two thousand and twenty-four, we're looking at new playground equipment through CDA. Lafayette Park, one and a half million dollars of ARPA funding has been approved for a new skate park. And we have a pending application to the Mass Land and Water Conservation Fund to, to do some other repairs, which include the pathways, benches, lighting, and the basketball court. Griffin Park was redone in two thousand and eighteen through CDA. North Park, in two thousand and sixteen, we received an LWCF grant funding and a match from CDA to do an inclusion playground. The park budget contributed some money to that pro, project as well. CPC funded the grandstand removal in two thousand and twenty-one. Through an earmark secured by Representative Fiola, we were able to do some ice rink repairs and tree planting and vista pruning. The sidewalks on President Ave were also redone and the comfort station was demolished. Again, through ARPA, a new skate park will be installed by August of two thousand and twenty-four. Maplewood Park saw new playground equipment in two thousand and eighteen through a donation from Robert Kraft and the New England Patriots. And in two thousand and twenty-one, along with Stafford Road, Park Drive was repaved. The Maplewood Baseball League secured CPC funding to do repairs and replace the lighting for their ball fields. Chu Park received CDA funding in two thousand and twenty to do a new backstop, benches, fencing for dugouts, and rehabilitated bleachers. Father Kelly received recently some funding for their lighting as well. They're in the design phase and they have four hundred thousand dollars to complete the project. Ruggles Park, in two thousand and sixteen, received thirty-one thousand dollars from CDA to do a new basketball court and replace the hoops and stands. The Juntil Tot Lot was rehabbed in two thousand and nineteen, again, through CDA. Bicentennial Park, there's, this was done before we slated where the outdoor fitness equipment will finally rest at Britland Park. But Bicentennial is getting new tennis court lighting. The work has been assigned through, to a vendor via the park department budget. There were some projects that occurred over multiple parks. So in two thousand and sixteen, a park grant and the CDA funding match repaired basketball courts at Kennedy Park, Ruggles, Maplewood, Abbott Court, and North Park. Ballfield renovations were completed at Maplewood, Kennedy, and Abbott Court, again, through park funding and CDA. Pathways were improved at Ruggles and Father Kelly, again, another park grant and CDA match funding. Tree plantings have occurred in multiple parks, including Pulaski Park. That was funded through our tree division budget. Turner Park and Lafayette were funded through a Greening the Gateway Communities grant from the state. And thirteen trees were planted at North Park, again, from earmark from Representative Fiola. Two thousand and eighteen saw Pulaski and Chu Park receive new spray pads, again, park funding and CDA match funding. Cemeteries through CPC, we received two hundred and seventy-one thousand to repair the gatehouse. The, I think the repairs came out quite nicely. And we do, we submitted another CPA funding application to repair the vehicular gate, the pillars, and the ironwork. Oak Grove Cemetery saw the archway rehabilitated in two thousand and seventeen. We just completed a million dollar construction and design of an expansion to provide new burial space. In two thousand and twenty, we installed columbaria. And we have recently funded a master plan that should be done in the next couple of years. For open spaces, the city pier was redone through multiple different efforts. And a boat docking system is currently being installed. The Family Picnic Grove received some CDA funding for new picnic tables and signage. The Bowenville Green also received some CDA funding for landscaping and benches. And the Jerry Lawton Plaza is in the design phase, funded through ARPA. We have about three hundred thousand dollars to do the design and construction. We anticipate receiving construction documents in the next month or so to be able to put that work out to bid. ARPA has funded a one point two million dollar tree planting and stump removal program. We will be removing all of the stumps throughout the city, both on the street, in the street layout and parks. We'll do some related sidewalk repairs, plant hopefully about three hundred and fifty trees in our streets and parks. Some of this will include some tree filter boxes to help with stormwater runoff and piloting a two-year front yard tree planting program where residents and business owners can have a tree planted on their property within twenty feet of the road layout. The Alima Quikashan River Rail Trail, we are in the early construction phases of Phase Four, funded through ARPA to the tune of four million dollars. Additionally, we're doing the Westport Extension. We are in the construction phases and permitting through Mass Trails and CPC funding totaling three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then in summary, this chart shows that the parks that have completed projects, projects underway, or are in planning and feasibility phases. The past two years, we've spent over three million dollars in parks. We have just shy of eight million dollars funded and we anticipate spending another four point two in the near future.
Council Kadeem?
Oh, no, when, when you're done.
I'll say.
So thank you. I think the presentation was great. Can you just bring up that, that last slide, though? Because I think this touches based on what I was really gonna try to articulate. You know, I, I think the city does a great job of trying to leverage monies to make improvements. However, my concern here is when you went through all these slides, the amount of money, so total spent, three million dollars funded improvements, almost eight million dollars. So that's not city money. That's either, you know, state money coming in, CPC money, ARPA money coming in. And my biggest concern and the concern that I've had for a number of years is that our operating budget does not reflect maintenance on any of these projects, right? So we continue to add, which I think is a great thing, right, to recreational and open space, but what we fail to do is budget for the maintenance and care of these properties, right? So you want to just go back to Britland Park? I think L. Alvera was here when we went out to do the turf fields or maybe, I think he might have been on that project, the lead. So that was over ten years ago. That, that needs to be at least resurfaced, and maybe not the complete field, but that needs to be done. You start looking at basketball courts, which I frequent with my, my kids, Highland Ave, and then also next to Moren School. There's cracks in them, paint's starting to fade, so that there's maintenance. And when we start to see some of these new projects, while they're, they beautify the city, if we don't have a budget to maintain this, they're just gonna fall to the wayside. And I know we can't constantly go back to CPC or CDA or park grants to continuously renovate it. So my, my concern is, is making sure that when we as a city council approve a budget, that we have a budget that's adequate to make sure that all the investments that are being put in, and this is all taxpayer money, whether it's ARPA money, CP, CPA money, park grants, it's all taxpayer money that, you know, we're, we're looking at a, a return on our, our investment and we're, we're maintaining them to, to the standard that we need. So whether that's, you know, making sure that we have enough staff to go through, and, and I know you know this, you know, being in charge of the cemeteries, but if you don't have the staff to maintain it, it becomes very, very difficult. And we just constantly are playing catch-up. So I just want to figure out, you know, what does, with all these improvements that we're looking at, the eight million dollars that we've invested since two thousand and twenty, what does an operational budget for parks and wrecks truly look like? And I think we need to capture that and we need to make sure that we understand how many man-hours is needed for each park to maintain it. I mean, you just look at the overlook for Kennedy Park. I mean, to try to maintain that is gonna take, you know, at least a week, right, to, to be, to do it right, if you can do all of Kennedy Park, okay? And you, you just multiply that by the number of, of parks that we, and open space that we currently have. I just want to see where that number is and how many man-hours we have so that as a city council, we can make sure that we're supporting open space and, and recreation for, for the community. So that's my concern. I appreciate the investment. I, I like what we're doing in terms of the beautification of everything, but I, I think we also need to make sure it's sustainable because to have it, you know, all these new projects and then two years, three years, see them kind of fall off and need significant repair when we can have that preventative maintenance on these, on these properties. I, I think we need to make sure that we're doing that. That's, that's all I'll say. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Council. Council of Liberty?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have a, a question on the priority ratings. I know in the book, each thing is, is listed as a priority rating as you go through, but is there like a master list of priority rating one projects? Or is it, do you just have to go through-
I went through and-
And found each one?
Pulled them out from each of the parks. They do have it organized by park, so-
Okay.
They do have it organized by park, so that would be the list.
Thank you for doing that. Sorry you had to do that. And then I just had a couple of questions on a few things that you said. On Kennedy, I know when I met with the mayor a few months back about the splash pad, they were talking about putting the splash pad where the current ice rink is, in and around where the current ice rink is. They actually had a beautiful design for it, and on here I see that it's back to maybe talking about the existing pool building. Do you know? There's an update on that?
I don't know if the location has been finalized at this point. From the conversations I've had, they're looking at both the parking issue, making sure that if we provide space, splash pads and other recreation tools down there, that there is enough parking for people who want to enjoy them. So I think the last discussion I heard was around the pool area, so that way there'd be parking, there's new parking going in with the tennis courts as well.
Okay. My only comment on that is, when we had it, it seemed like it was a great idea to move it up because the park building is there, the bathrooms are there, the playground's there. If you're a parent and you're bringing kids to, you know, go to the splash pad and the playground, you can see them kind of at both places. And if one's down the hill, which I know was the original intent, and something I had worked on years ago, it just makes more sense from a parent's perspective if they're, you know, in sight view from each other. But I understand there's other things that need to be considered. As far as the overlook, I know you said there was in the design for 183,000. I believe that there was already a design done for the overlook, going back maybe 10 years. And this is a criticism on this, I think with the turnover in departments and administrations, designs get done and paid for, and then they get left somewhere. We just saw it with the Central Fire Station. It was done, we had plans done and estimates back in 2018. Those aren't up to date anymore, so now we have to spend money to do them again. So I don't know who keeps all of the old designs, so I just hate to see the city pay money to do design plans over and over again, especially at that amount. The one other question going through here, and then just a statement. On North Park, for the skate park, there's a dollar amount here, $2,250,000, but it doesn't say what the funding source is. And is that just for the skate park?
For the skate park, yes, and that's through ARPA.
That is through ARPA?
Yep.
Okay. And that's just for the one skate park?
Correct.
And are all the skate parks being redone?
I think there's three. So there's North Park, Lafayette, and I'm blanking on the third.
There is three. I don't...
Abbott Court. So the three are a total package. We broke down the numbers as best we could.
So is the $2 million just for North Park?
Just for North Park, yes.
And then I noticed as we were going through, there was a lot of funding that Rep. Fiola had put in for and secured for different areas in her district. I know that we have two other state reps that represent the other areas of the city. Do you know if there's been any communication with either of them, or if there's any funding that they've put in for, for parks in work in their districts?
I know Representative Sylvia secured some money to do some vista pruning and shrub removal at Cook Pond, and we do anticipate some more funding coming down for that as well, to improve the visibility and potential access to the pond going forward for the South End neighborhoods.
Okay. And then I know Mrs. Smith is still down in the other meeting, but I would echo what Councilor Kadeem said as far as the maintenance. We've put a lot of money into parks, but we really need to be able to maintain them. And I know every time she's come before us at budget time, we speak about how little is in her budget for maintenance. So that's something we want to be very mindful of as we go into. I'm sure they're already working on the budget for this year.
We are in the budget process already this year for department heads, putting together our proposals to the administration. I know that there has been conversations, at least on my end, and I'm sure Ms. Smith has with Mr. Olivera as well, about operational changes we can make to become more efficient with the staffing numbers that we currently have, and making some small changes to find those improvements. So hopefully, we can share those operational changes with you as we develop them, and then obviously, our budget proposals when we get...
I know you have the council's support to, you know, to ask for additional funding for, well, at least speaking for myself, for maintenance of all of these parks because that always ends up, we have a lot of rain and everything goes sky-high at the same time, and everyone starts complaining, and you guys can only get to, you know, take care of so many things at a time. So definitely have my support as far as increasing the budget for maintenance for all of the parks. That I yield.
Thank you, Council. I just want to add more, one question than I want to make a statement. On that last chart, Mr. Pirino, there are a few of them that are not indicated as far as anything is going on. For example, Dumont Field, Dumont Park, is it just not a priority at the current moment?
I wouldn't say it's not a priority.
Where does it land, basically?
So the information presented here is, again, what's underway and what's already been funded. It doesn't mean that the administration hasn't been looking at other opportunities. Like I said, Lafayette Park, recently, we had the state release the LCWF funding availability. So that was one we were able to add to this planning and feasibility slide. Again, as grant opportunities become available, we've got a good grant writing team and administration that make sure that we are pursuing these different funding options. And we've been quite successful in securing those funds. And CDA plays a big role in that, making sure that we can provide the match. So I don't think this says that we're not focused on making improvements in those areas. This is just where we are with the funding that we have right now. The Silva Dog Park, for example, doesn't have anything checked off there, but I do know that in-house, the Parks Department has been making some small improvements, nothing, you know, terribly glamorous, but putting in benches from other parks that had benches replaced that are still in good condition. We're relocated to the Dog Park to at least provide some seating. So we're looking at those options as well.
One thing that I'm growing more concerned about is some of the parks that are, I think, very much underutilized and may need an opportunity for re-envision. You know, I use the example, growing up as a kid, I played baseball, and I always used to drive by Columbus Park. And now the baseball field in Columbus Park, in many ways, is not much is going on there. The league fell through some years ago. So I'm wondering, how do we try to re-envision some of the use of these parks, these fields, and then maybe solicit public input to see what can be done to change those things?
Certainly. I think you see some of that happening already with the pickleball installations that are happening. That's a new trend. Hopefully, it's one that'll last a while. But when the city does its open space and recreation plan, that requires and solicits public feedback. When we did the Lafayette Park, we submitted, we had a public hearing as well as a survey that we're soliciting some feedback of, you know, what priorities we should have in those repairs. So as funding becomes available, as we're looking at these parks, we certainly want public input to make sure we're capturing the trends and reinvigorating the parks and bringing life back to them. I think some of the community partners we have have also been bringing back life to the parks. Kennedy Park had some Christmas lighting this year for the first time in quite some time, so it's really a joint effort, I think, from all the different interested parties in the community.
I mean, I use Father Tavasus Park as a perfect example of a big piece of grass that's completely underutilized. You know, I think it was a beautiful project. I witnessed it because it was literally in my backyard at the school that I'm at. But you have a very large field with lights that could be done so much more with. And then, of course, the conversation with Tavasus always becomes, there's not enough parking. So you could beautify the field, but then there's really no place to park along that area. But I really want to think, I know, looking at the plans, they close up at 2024. So I would imagine that after '24, there's going to be another process looking at our parks. But I would really want to hear, and I think this is going to go back to the resolution, from the Park Board as well, of what are some of the things they're hearing, some of the requests they're receiving, and what can we do in the immediate future to maybe re-envision some of these fields and how people can use them to the, you know, to the best of their ability? Because I think there are a lot of up-and-coming leagues that are looking for use but need a little help, and I think it's just going to bring a lot of positivity to all of us, especially among our kids. I mean, that's the biggest thing. If our kids have the opportunity, but we need to give them the field to play on. And I think right now, some places we have them, some places we don't. I think we need to do a little better on that.
I can tell you from attending Park Board meetings for the last almost five years on a regular basis, the public that does show up and provide feedback, it's heard. We did get a lot of feedback in the recent past for pickleball, so I think that's part of the reason why we're seeing that being implemented and built out in our parks.
Council of Liberty?
I know, Councilor Burr, did you want to speak?
So I think we'll do some post-citizens input after we address this item, and then we'll invite the gentleman down to speak. And I'll echo my colleagues. Excellent presentation, Mr. Pirino. Appreciate it. I think it gives us a better than a 400-page document that we're all flipping through today to try to figure out where we're at. And I think this gives us a better idea of where we stand, and there's been a lot of good work done, and I think the good work is just continuing. But I'll echo my colleagues, you know, and I think in my support as well, that the budget for the Parks Department is hurting, and you can't. We have so many beautiful things, but nothing to maintain it with. So I think we do need to advocate on their behalf to help that out. So. Council of Liberty?
Ma'am, Clerk, would you just make sure this came from the Committee on Finance, that the rest of the council gets a copy of this?
That'd be great. So just back to the resolution. I know the resolution states that the administration and Park Board be invited to a future meeting in the Committee on Finance. I'm wondering if that would be a helpful process to hear exactly what are some of their struggles and how can we advocate on their behalf going forward? As Mr. Pirino said, budget season is, you know, the start of the process, so I wonder if we can get some more information. I know Mrs. Smith is still stuck downstairs in a meeting, so I'm wondering if we want to refer this to the Committee on Finance and then schedule that joint conversation?
Six and seven?
It would be seven.
We took them together?
Seven states the, looking for that future meeting. The colleagues have any thoughts on that?
I'll make a motion. Motion to refer to Finance Committee?
Second.
Motion to refer to Finance, first by Councilor Kadeem, second by Council of Liberty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? You guys have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pirino. Okay. So with that said, we'll have some post-citizens input. Sir, if you want to come down? Come on down. Just your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anthony Comer. I live at 397 Belmont Street here in Fall River. I own and coach the semi-pro team here, the Detroit City Titans. We've had the team for about four years now, and the struggle that we have had is the fields in this city. We've been kicked off of every field in the city because nobody wants football on the field. Unfortunately, there is a ton of kids that play football in the city, and they look back as to the cities that the city doesn't care about them. We've got game kids on our team that lay down their colors because we have strict rules, and it's more of an outlet for a lot of these kids. I hate, would hate to see us happen to leave because we can't play, but, you know, we found a couple resolutions, like we actually had a practice field at Father Tavasus. But for us, it wasn't big enough for us personally, long enough. So one of the things where we reached out, we're looking for, like, Britlin. But unfortunately, we were told, you know, we couldn't play in Britlin because it was packed with soccer. You know, two hours once a week is all we were trying to put in for. We play our home games at Durfee, but unfortunately, with Durfee being tore up, we have nowhere to play. And unfortunately, with a lot of these kids, I can't control all of them, you know, and it's a struggle to keep them all calm. So one of the big issues that we need, we need a field. You know, like, North Park, for instance, at the bottom of where I live, that field would have been perfect for us, but we were kicked off because they said it's only strictly for baseball. So that's really the issue that we've come up. And like I said, it's been four years, and we've been struggling with this. You know, finding time to sneak here and there, leaving the city. We don't want to leave the city. We love this place. Trying to do everything. I own a business here in the city, trying to keep everything here in Fall River. And that's my input for the night.
Just, if I could, I mean, I agree with everything he's saying, which is why, you know, I think we have these conversations to make sure that the master plan, and I know we've got a master plan, but North Park in particular, right, I think you've got a baseball field that's not being utilized, right? So now it's just being wasted. And I think we just need to start looking at, and I'm glad I heard there's pickleball being looked into for some of the tennis courts and things of that nature, but we also need to not just focus on, you know, baseball and soccer, but this football, this basketball, this basketball. And I think we need to make sure that the facilities, whatever the facilities are, that we know, number one, we can maintain them. And I think a large part of that is you don't necessarily have an issue with football going on, as long as you've got another sport that's going, you know, in the opposite direction of where they're playing so that, you know, the ground doesn't get ruined. And there's ways to maintain that, but I think it comes back down to everything that we just stated, that in the operational budget, we need to see some additional monies, and then we need to have a plan for all our leagues, you know? And I think we've run to the same issue with the softball leagues, where you've got one league that really kind of dominates, you know, a couple of fields, and then you've got other organizations that are trying to get in that they can't get into, right? So I think we've got to find that balance and figure out the approach that needs to be taken, but I think it comes back down to funding and understanding what the needs are. And I think that is part of the plan, and, you know, I think we need to have those conversations internally with the administration as to what we want to see. But I got to be honest, we have these conversations year after year after year when it comes down to budget. So, you know, as councils, I think we just need to put our foot down and say this is what we need. We've got splash pads, and I know I'm repeating myself, but splash pads that are being, you know, built, some that are currently in operation, but there's no budget to maintain the splash pads, right? We've got these fields that are going in. I'm telling you right now, we've got beautiful basketball courts where if you go down in your neck of the woods, you know, next to Highland Park and North Park, that they are absolutely packed, but it's wear and tear already, right? So at some point, they're just going to look like they need to be repaired, and then you're going to have, you know, whoever's going there is going to have less appreciation for the facility, and it's just going to go downhill. So I think we need to just do a little bit better job because there's a ton of money that's being invested into the community, which is a great thing, but we just need to make sure it's sustainable.
We also offered to raise our own money to put portable field goal pads at Britlin, because like I said, we're going to lose Durfee this year because they're going to tear up the field in our community ready. We have teams that are coming from, you know, out of state to come play us, you know? So I'll give an example. If we were to play, where else better to play behind a police station? One of the safest places you can be. But with the amenities that are around there, the teams that are out of state, I have to send them other places to go because, you know, we don't have it here in the city. So you get a team that comes up from Connecticut, you know, and I made a deal with, you know, the hotel at the other end of Fall River for them to stay in for X amount of dollars per night, so they have to drive home. Well, now, because of that plan, you know, we'll go to Somerset or somewhere farther away and take the money away from the city, you know? And all we're trying to do is just provide a happy space.
Listen, I'd advocate for a second turf field, to be honest with you. I know some folks question the safety of it, but I think the longevity and the maintenance for turf fields, I think if we can, number one, the top layer at Britlin needs to be repaired. So I think we need to start talking about that, and I know we don't have a say on that. That definitely needs to be repaired, and then we should be looking at a second site that would have a turf field that provides an additional amenities for other sports in a combination, right? Because I think even soccer, I mean, that field's in high demand, so I think we need to have some type of location there, and we just need to figure it out, so.
Youth Council?
Oh, yeah, I do, sorry.
Council of Liberty?
I know you've been having this issue for a long time, and I assume you've been in front of...
front of the park board asking for a location and days and times to practice. Could we edit Item 7 and ask that we include football on here as well, just so we know that it gets talked about and discussed, so that his concerns don't just end here at Citizens Input? Ma'am, Clerk, can we do that? I know we already voted to send it to Finance, but can we amend Item 7 specifically? I know we have baseball fields, but can we add football as well?
Second. So we have a motion to amend the resolution that we're going to send to the Committee on Finance. We have the motion made by Council of Liberty, second by Councilor Kadeem. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Guys have it.
I want to let you know when that's going to be on the Committee on Finance and come and speak.
Come down.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to adjourn?
Nothing else. I'm sorry?
Motion to adjourn.
Yep. With no business front of us, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First by Council of Liberty, second by Councilor Kadeem. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you very much, folks. Meeting is adjourned.